Good evening, everyone. The January 16th, 2024 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. I'm surprised to see such a crowd tonight on such a very, very cold night. It is my turn to lead the council in invocation. May we listen to one another intently with the purpose of bettering ourselves and our community? May we humbly accept the responsibilities assigned to us? May we carry out each of these responsibilities to the best of our capabilities? And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, we did receive a few submissions. Two of the, one of those was definitely for the invite to audience, and two were more directed towards legislation and will be counted at that time.
Thank you. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When your name is called, please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We have two people signed up to speak, Ms. Kate Thomas and Kurt Svenson. Mr. Atkinson, do you have something to share at invitation to audience?
Yes, thank you.
Not on the printed agenda, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Svenson, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm Kurt Svenson, Arnold, Maryland. I need to call attention to how county government directly contributes to the problem of housing affordability for essential workers with low and moderate incomes who have achieved home ownership but struggle to maintain it. To illustrate, I'm going to share a story of an essential worker that I recently met. Jane Doe is a 62-year-old widow. Nearly 30 years ago, she and her husband bought a modest home on the edge of a residential community in North County. Built in the '40s, this 1,000-square-foot detached home with three bedrooms and one-and-a-half baths now has a taxable value of $250,000, $180,000 after applying her homestead tax credit. Jane qualifies for about $11,000 per year in spousal survivors' benefits. To supplement this, she works 10 months a year, about 30 hours a week, at $20 an hour. Since this $26,000 exceeds the annual earning limit, Social Security withholds one for every $2 earned over that limit. So Jane's annual gross income is $35,000. Her property tax bill is $1,764 and consumes 5% of her income, significantly higher than the median property tax burden. Jane is eligible for the county's homeowners' property tax credit program, but due to the restrictive provisions of that county program, when you plug her data into the formula, it yields a credit of zero. If the county's program was adjusted as I proposed last year, see my written testimony, Jane would qualify for an $889 credit, and her property tax bill of $875 would represent 2.5% of her income. That's much more in line with the median property tax burden in this county. Thank you.
Mr. Atkinson.
Good evening. I'm, for the record, I'm O'Brien Atkinson, President of the Local Fraternal Order of Police, representing our Anarundel County police officers. As I'm sure you're all aware, our department is struggling with our staffing. You know the difficulty our agency has had hiring police officers, and for years, the FOP has been fighting to address this problem, and we appreciate the bipartisan help from this council on that measure. We wish we could be as thankful for the various administrations and their support, but month after month, year after year, administration after administration, we find ourselves coming up short. By the county's own estimation, we are some 340 officers short of where we should be. That is a 30% shortage. The police department and our recruiters are trying desperately to fill that gap, but our staffing continues to fall, and eventually services will be cut. The county office personnel tells us that they're trying to help, but to them, we are just one of 11 bargaining groups that they have to deal with. We looked to the county's website under "How to Apply to be a Police Officer," and it said, "We are no longer accepting applications for entry-level police officers." And I know this council fought hard to get more positions into the budget, and we certainly do appreciate that. Our severely understaffed, struggling Anarundel County Police Department is not hiring entry-level police officers. It took the FOP raising this issue multiple times to get at least the message changed to advertise when it opens back up. This is not new. Last time, our agency did a promotional spot on the local news directing people to our website, which again said, "We are no longer accepting applications." We've told the county that there is no reason to close the hiring process, even for a moment, but over and over again, the administration has stymied our ability to hire police officers and that we desperately need. Thank you for adding the positions to the budget, but for now, we're not accepting applicants for entry-level officers. We feel that needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak, come, please come up to the table and state your name and address and topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone else in the audience looking to speak at invitation to audience? Seeing no movement, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of a whole?
Radveen, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Madam.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of January 2nd, 2024.
Minutes of January 2nd, 2024. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Mr. Smith and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 2nd, 2024?
Radveen, so moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. The minutes of January 2nd, 2022, 2024 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 424, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel. Bill Number 524, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation, and Transfer of Funds.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 224, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel County Community College Funding. Resolution Number 324, Resolution Amending Certain Portions of Titles 1, 3, 4, and 5 of the Rules of Procedure of the County Council. Resolution Number 424, Resolution Amending Certain Sections of Title 2 of the Rules of Procedure of the County Council.
Madam Chair, may I request to be added as a cosponsor to Resolution Number 3-24? Actually, I guess that's to you, Madam Administrative Officer.
So noted, Ms. Radveen. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 84-23.
Bill Number 8423, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Public Works, Odenton Town Center, Odenton Town Center Master Plan.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, when you gather your team, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Mark Wildoner from the Office of Planning and Zoning and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. This bill has been discussed a number of times at prior hearings and work session. I know there are some amendments to discuss, so we are here to answer any questions and talk about the amendments.
Is there any discussion from my colleagues before we move right into amendments? Seeing none? Well, I guess we could open up the public hearing. We should do that. We'll now open up the public hearing on Bill Number 84-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, we did. Madam Chair, members of the council, we received one submission. Everybody here received a copy of that via email, and it is included in the summary that is posted online.
It's my understanding we have no one signed up currently to speak on Bill 84-23. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak during this public hearing on Bill 8423, make your intentions known, and we'll move forward. Mr. Title?
Yes.
Sir, you have the floor.
And everyone else, good evening on this winter night after two years. Look, I've been here, worked tirelessly on this bill through, through the various committees that I'm involved with, directly with Julie and with planning and zoning. And all in all, I think it's probably going to be the best it's going to be. However, I still have reservations with the First Amendment regarding roads. I think it's extremely subjective. I think it could create a problem, especially properties that are bound by four-county roads, and might be a smaller parcel that now has to improve all sides of the property on behalf of the county. And I just don't think that that is fair. We're trying to create situations where we have some affordable housing, but if you continue to place these various costs that, again, are taxpayer costs, maintaining roads, maintaining schools, things of that nature, we do pay impact fees as developers for impacts for those things. We're being double taxed on this, and I really, I don't know your backgrounds and what your involvement at all have been in development, but I would love you the opportunity for you all to sit down and see what's involved in the development, what it costs to build an apartment building or an office building, and what those expenses are to understand exactly the impact. I can't do retail for less than $50 a foot. I can't deliver it. You don't have anybody in the county that can afford that. Small businesses, they can't afford that. But I can't afford to build it unless I can get those rents, and those are nationals. Your apartments that are $4,900 for a two-bedroom unit, a lot of it has to do with what we have to do on behalf of the county. Now, with that said, I also think the developers are building too many Class A apartment buildings. I really do.
Thank you, sir.
I think that that's part of the issue, too, is they need to look inside themselves. But all in all, I'm fairly pleased with what the outcome has been, and I appreciate the council and planning and zoning working with the community.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing on Bill Number 84-23 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 84-23.
Bill Number 8423, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Public Works, Odenton Town Center, Odenton Town Center Master Plan.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 11. Thank you.
Amendment Number 11. This amendment allows business complexes as a permitted use and business complexes with auxiliary use as a conditional use in the historic village mix block.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment.
Yes, and before I go into that, I do want to, Mr. Title has been here every week, and I want to thank him. This bill is a better bill because he has been involved and very instrumental in getting it where it is. We disagree on this one amendment, but I've told him I will keep a careful eye on it to have there, and I really appreciate his input on everything. So, but for Amendment 11, this is now allowing in the historic village mix, business complexes. It involves, we have a property there that already meets the definition of a business complex, and so this is just adding that in so that, to an existing use that's already in place. So, and I ask for your support, my motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
The administration.
As always, I want to thank the sponsor for working with the Office of Planning and Zoning and the Office of Law on these amendments, and we would urge the council to adopt it.
Is there any discussion, Ms. Radveen?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Councilmember Hummer, what particular property?
So there is one, an owner who owns some adjacent lots to each other that currently have, there's a pit barbecue place and a hardware place and a contractor, and so they're adjacent parcels that already have a mix of businesses there.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 11.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent this evening. Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number 11 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 12.
Amendment Number 12. This amendment adds certain definitions and modifies the definition of transit-oriented development policy area in the Odenton Town Center Master Plan.
Ms. Hummer, this is also your amendment. You have the floor.
Yes, this one's kind of self-explanatory. We're just expanding on some definitions in the glossary of the plan, and we're also modifying the definition of transit-oriented development policy area to match the state definition of that as well. So I ask for your support and move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
Does the administration have?
We support this amendment and would urge the council to adopt it.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 12.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number 12 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 13.
Amendment Number 13. This amendment changes the proposed future zoning district from OTCWC, West Core, to OTCT, Transition, and changes the configuration of the future zoning for the properties located on tax map 0021, grid 0022, parcel 0170, 0436, 0168, 0169, 0189, and 0498, known as 1421 through 1452 Odenton Road, Odenton, revises the applicable maps accordingly and removes references to moving the southern section of the OTCT into the OTCWC zoning district.
Ms. Hummer.
Did everybody get all that? Have you got all that? So this is, within the Odenton Master Plan, there are a number of small districts that are designed, and many of them, it's, they're, have special designations and permissible uses depending on the proximity to the train station and for the transit-oriented development. This is just moving one property into the transit from the West Core to the transition area. It just allows some different uses. It's an existing property that's been there for a long time that has been using this, and I ask for your support. So I've moved, so moved, moved the motion. Y'all know what I'm saying.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. There we go.
Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
Mr. Hunt.
We would urge the council to adopt this amendment as well.
Is there any discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 13.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number 13 has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 14.
Amendment Number 14. This amendment adds various light industrial uses and one retail and service use as conditional or permitted uses in the OTCT zoning district, establishes the conditions for the uses, and revises the description of the OTCT zoning district in the Odenton Town Center Master Plan.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
This one is coupled with the amendment before. It's just adding in the uses for this property that's moving to the transition area for longtime uses that have been done on the property. So it's just updating the code to match the previous amendment. So I ask your support and motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Radveen's second, or Mr. Smith.
Mr. Hunt.
We support.
Is there any further discussion on this amendment? Ms. Radveen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 14.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number 14 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 15.
Amendment Number 15. This technical amendment corrects an erroneous code citation, corrects the names of the current Chair and Vice Chair of the County Council in the plan, corrects erroneous map references in the plan, and adds a missed reference to the state for the TOD designated area on map 15, Special Economic Development Designations 2023, in the plan.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment.
And this is just the final amendment to do cleanup of all the technical issues that we found, as we've made amendments and made changes. So this is the final, because we are in favor of correcting typos and things. So I ask for your support and motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Radveen's second.
Mr. Hunt.
I know the council is very familiar with our stance on typos, and we would urge you to just adopt this amendment.
I assume there's no further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 15.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number 15 has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 84-23 will be heard on February 5th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 91-23.
Bill Number 9123, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Tax Credits, Public Safety Officer Property Tax Credit.
This is sponsored by the entire council. Is there any discussion on this bill before we open the public hearing on Bill 91-23? Happy to have any of my colleagues speak to this public safety tax credit. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 91-23. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, we did receive one submission. Everyone here got a copy of that via email, and it is included in the summary that's posted online.
And at this time, we did not have anybody sign up ahead of time. If there's anyone here who now wishes to speak on Bill Number 91-23, please come up to the table and have a seat when it is your turn. Please state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. Sir?
I'm Victor Henderson, 12 North Room, Parkley, Glenburnie, Maryland. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. As I said, I'm Victor Henderson. I'm the President of the Anarundel County Volunteer Firefighters Association. I'm here to express my support for the public safety officer property tax credit legislation. Thank you for amending the legislation during your last council session to add in all volunteer members of our volunteer fire companies. All members play a valuable role. Our associate administrative and auxiliary members contribute not by riding apparatus and responding to emergencies, but by raising money so that those apparatus utilized by career staffing and volunteer staffing can be purchased. In total, there is fire apparatus valued at over $40 million currently in service that was purchased by volunteer fire companies. The alarmers also provide a vital role in our combination fire service in Anarundel County. While they are not riding members, they do respond to fire and police calls of an extended operation to provide beverage and food service and also rehab station at the scene. Our volunteer fire companies could not survive without the work of all of our members, including our firefighters and EMTs, our volunteers that show up every day and work hard, and our alarmers that help so many. I ask you to pass this legislation.
Thank you. Mr. Atkinson?
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is O'Brien Atkinson. I'm President of the Anarundel County Fraternal Order of Police, and just on behalf of our active and retired members, we have a few here in the audience if they wouldn't mind just standing up. We just want to thank you for your support and thank you for, you know, putting forth this bill. As, as you know, we are in a crisis, and everything that you can do to help us is very much appreciated. So thank you.
Mr. Svenson.
Hi, Kurt Svenson, Arnold, Maryland. I can do math. I know where this bill's headed. I need to point out, though, clearly and on the public record, the following fact. It is pretty easy to earn at least 50 service points under Section 121305 of the county code. And in doing so, that person need not put themselves in harm's way. For example, one, under subsection 5, attend two meetings a month, 20 points. Under subsection 4, get appointed as a member of a committee, 10 points. Under subsection 3, spend four hours twice a month at a station, planning projects, conducting yard and landscaping activities, 20 points. If my math is correct, these three service elements add up to 50 points. Why do we spend so much time and effort expanding the definition of certain job classifications like "public safety officer" and "essential worker" while we neglect people in need? For example, a 62-year-old widow working 30 hours a week to pace together an annual income of $35,000 and who is struggling to pay her mortgage and property taxes on the home in which she and her husband raise their family. The auditor's fiscal note on this bill states that it would not impact the property tax revenue collected by the county, but rather would be absorbed by the remaining tax base. You know who's going to absorb the cost of this tax expenditure? That 62-year-old widow I described in testimony at the start of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to testify on Bill 91-23? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 91-23 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 91-23.
Bill Number 9123, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Tax Credits, Public Safety Officer Property Tax Credit.
Mr. Hunt, did you or your colleagues care to share any information for us tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Brian Schenk from the Office of Finance and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. I know we've discussed this bill several times, so I won't belabor any more points and just remind the council of the fiscal impact of this bill.
Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Ms. Feidler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the folks who are here tonight in chambers, who have served our community, our county. You've come out multiple nights. I think the reason that you are seeing unanimous support of this bill is because we value what you do. what you do every day, what you've done every day, and that you put your life on the line to serve the residents of Anaronda County, so thank you.
Seeing no other lights or comments from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number ninety-one dash twenty-three.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent, Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, bill number ninety-one twenty-three has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-two dash twenty-three.
Bill number ninety-two twenty-three, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, zoning, small business districts.
This is Ms. Fiedler and Ms. Volkey's bill. Ms. Fiedler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've discussed this bill at length. Nothing further to add, other than there is still, I acknowledge that there is still more work to be done on the bill. I've communicated over the weekend on amendment that we passed at our last meeting, that I do think upon hearing from residents, especially in Ms. Rodvian's district, that there's a need to go back and look at a particular section of the bill. We, I had intended, I think Ms. Ledbetter as well, intended on introducing an amendment this evening. We are actually not going to do that tonight. So, a question came up as we were heading out, that I feel like we need to clarify before we introduce that, knowing there's more work to be done at the appropriate time. I will be making a motion to hold.
Is there any discussion, my colleagues, or Mr. Hunt?
No, Madam Chair.
We will now open the public hearing on bill number ninety-two dash twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we have any testimony from the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, we received about forty-four submissions through the two online testimony tools. Everybody here received copies via email, it's included in that summary that's posted online as well.
Is there anyone here? We have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone here in the audience prepared to speak on bill ninety-two twenty-three at this time? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing on bill number ninety-two dash twenty-three. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-two dash twenty-three.
Bill number ninety-two twenty-three, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, zoning, small business districts.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Fiedler?
I'd like to make a motion to hold bill ninety-two twenty-three until our February 5th meeting.
Ledbetter, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold this bill until, I'm sorry, February 5th?
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey is absent, again? Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, three in the negative, and one absent, the motion to hold the vote on bill number ninety-two twenty-three has failed.
This bill is now up for a vote of this council. Are, is there any other further discussion on this bill before we take this final vote? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number ninety-two dash twenty-three.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey is absent, Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, three in the negative, and one absent, bill number ninety-two twenty-three has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-three dash twenty-three.
Bill number ninety-three twenty-three, an ordinance concerning pensions, participation, transferred service, employees retirement plan, fire service retirement plan, police service retirement plan.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table I have Ann Bedowski and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Personnel, Anne Sterner from Bolton, who is our actuary, Stephen Thoreau from the Office of Budget, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law, or, sorry, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. We discussed this bill at the work session last week, so just a couple high-level points. So, this bill ninety-three twenty-three allows participants in the fire service retirement plan and police service retirement plan hired after, after a certain date to purchase service credit for prior participation in other plans. It adds employees of the Resilience Authority of Annapolis and Anaronda County as participants in the employees retirement plan. It adds employees in certain job classifications as participants in the fire service retirement plan, and it allows participants in both fire and police service retirement plans who terminate employment for less than twelve months to return to participate in the plan, provided certain conditions are met, and provides for the recalc, the calculation and repayment of contributions to reenter the plan. I'm happy to turn it over to Ann if she wants to add anything additional. We do have two administration amendments that are before you that we'll discuss at the appropriate time.
Ann Bedowski, Personnel Officer, I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any further questions that were raised at the work session.
Are there any questions of the panel at this time from my colleagues on bill ninety-three dash twenty-three? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on bill number ninety-three dash twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
May I ask, Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up currently?
We do not have anyone signed up.
We did not have anyone signed up ahead of time. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak on bill ninety-three dash twenty-three, please come up to the table and have a seat when it is your turn. State your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. Mr. Shire?
Good evening. Mike Shire, I'm here on behalf of the Pension Oversight Commission. The commission did submit its letter. There are, obviously are some issues with the legislation that the commission highlighted in that letter. It does look like the amendments that are proposed tonight do take care of some of those issues, but there are still a few things in there that we understand the administration and the bargaining groups are still in the process of discussing, so there may be further amendments, but I'll stand for any questions that I can answer within the bounds of the Pension Oversight Commission's meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Svensson?
I, I'm going to keep this brief. I know there's amendments, so I don't know the full picture, but generally buying into a plan generally involves covering all of the costs, and I'm not so sure that that's the case, the way this is written. And I guess I just end with this general guidance. Today's discretionary decisions become tomorrow's non-discretionary fixed costs. I've said it before, and I'm going to keep telling you that. Keep that in mind when you deal with pensions. Thank you.
While Mr. Atkinson prepares his remarks, is there anyone else? Last call for the public hearing on bill ninety-three twenty-three, this is a perfect time to come up and sit at the table. No, Mr. Atkinson, you have the floor.
Thank you. For the record, O'Brien Atkinson, President of the Anaronda County Fraternal Order Police. Council members, once again, thank you. Your support for our police officers is a model for other jurisdictions, and they should follow the model that you all have presented. You all know there's a desperate need for police officers in Anaronda County. It takes well over a year of training to get an entry-level recruit even minimally functional as a police officer. Our police department attempts to hire lateral officers, those that are already Maryland-trained, certified, and experienced, because they bring their training and experience to serve our county, and they do it within weeks of being hired. But the biggest difficulty we have in attracting these officers is that they start from scratch with their service time on pension. Bill ninety-three twenty-three was envisioned to help with this problem, and the FOP worked tirelessly to get a bill introduced like this one. I say like this one because this one is not very close to what we have actually fought for. This bill is more for show, we believe, for lateral officers that wish to come here, and so the county can say, we've done something, we're offering this benefit. However, the benefit is no benefit at all. The county administration is asking for the benefit of getting trained and experienced police officers, but it is not willing to give them much of anything in return. The cost for those experienced officers to take advantage of this benefit could be as much as forty thousand dollars or more. If the lateral even has that much money, which is doubtful, it would be more beneficial for an officer to just invest that money on their own. It may be true that the officer can pay that forty thousand dollars over three years, that's a thirteen thousand dollar a year pay cut. This bill does nothing to help our recruiting as currently written, and how do we fix it? It's simple. Whatever the officer takes out of their old pension system, they bring into the new one. That is what the cost neutral, that is what cost neutral means to us. It is cost neutral to the officer and to the pension system. The officer still contribute their share into our system, and county government still contributes their share to fund the system over the lifetime of the employees.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The public hearing on bill ninety-three dash twenty-three is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-three dash twenty-three.
Bill number ninety-three twenty-three, an ordinance concerning pensions, participation, transferred service, employees retirement plan, fire service retirement plan, police service retirement plan.
Is there any discussion before we go into the two amendments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment removes a requirement that a former participant be re-employed after January first, 2014, to return to participation in the fire service retirement plan or the police service retirement plan.
Mr. Hunt, did you want to say a couple words?
Certainly, Madam Chair. This does remove the ten-year look-back limit on reemploying former fire and police officers, and this was one of the issues raised in the letter from the Pension Oversight Commission, and we would urge the council to adopt this amendment.
Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second?
Rodbein's second.
Is there any discussion on amendment number one? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent, Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, amendment number one has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two, this amendment adds an option for former participants in the fire service plan or police service retirement plan who are re-employed and return to participation in the plan to repay refunded contributions in a combination of a lump sum and payroll deductions.
Mr. Hunt, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, what this amendment does is it allows those officers who are trans, fire, members that, who are transferring to the fire department from another jurisdiction to opt, to pay their contributions either as a lump sum, payroll deductions, or a combination of the two.
Is there a motion to adopt amendment number two?
Rodbein's so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on amendment number two from my colleagues?
I had a question, Madam Chair.
Mr. Smith?
For those that are opting into the program, let's say this passes, and they choose to do payroll deductions, is there a, but they never actually, let's say they quit in five years instead of whatever the time is to pay back into that program, what happens to the money that they paid into that program? Does that make sense?
Ann Bedowski, Personnel Officer, is your question about someone who is a redeposit, so has left and come back?
Yes.
We would have probably have to offset any contributions paid out to them for monies that they would have owed us for that service. So, there's a, there was an offset. If they were to retire, because it gave them enough service to retire, we could, and they didn't pay all, the full redeposit, we could take it from their monthly benefit as a deduction until it's fully paid.
I'm saying, what if they quit before they get to that point where they retire?
Okay, and then if they were to terminate service and they had not, we would have to pay them, and they were not vested, they would get a payment of their contributions and interest, and we can deduct it from that.
Thank you.
Seeing, and, no, seeing no other comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent, Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, amendment number two has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill number ninety-three dash twenty-three will be heard on February 5th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-four dash twenty-three.
Bill number ninety-four twenty-three, an ordinance concerning zoning requirements for conditional uses, business complexes in a residential district.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We discussed this bill at our last work session. It is essentially a follow-up to bill fifteen twenty-three that this council passed related to conditional uses associated with a property that provides first responder services as its primary function through the use of equipment and apparatus owned by a governmental entity or a volunteer organization. The bill before the council extends that to adjacent properties under the same ownership.
Does the administration have any comments at this time?
No, Madam Chair, just with me at the tables Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law.
We'll now open the public hearing, oh, is there any discussion at this time? We'll now open the public hearing on bill number ninety-four dash twenty-three. Did we get, do we have anyone sign up ahead of time? Do we have any online testimony? You know the drill.
We did receive one submission through the online testimony tool, Madam Chair, members of the council. Everyone here received a copy of that via email, and it is included in that summary that's posted online.
We did not have anyone sign up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on bill number ninety-four dash twenty-three? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on bill ninety-four dash twenty-three is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-four dash twenty-three.
Bill number ninety-four twenty-three, an ordinance concerning zoning requirements for conditional uses, business complexes in a residential district.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number ninety-four dash twenty-three.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey is absent, Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, three in the negative, one absent, bill number ninety-four twenty-three has been defeated.
I'm not sure this is a record, but on this cold and very wintry night, I hope everyone is very careful going home, please be safe. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The county council is now adjourned until February 5th, 2024. Please, please be safe in your journey home. Thank you so much.